Deanna Shaw is going to present our invocation for us this evening. Thank you, Deanna.
Yeah, thank you. Father, we thank you for this evening as we gather together and settle things and open things up and decide things. Father, we just thank you for the cooperation in this community, for what is best for the community. And I thank you for the mayor, all the councilmen, their dedication, also the city workers, the girls up on the top of the building there.
They're on top.
And they're on top. And the city workers in Department of Public Works, the police officers. So we ask for a special blessing upon all of them and protection for our police force. And Father, as we work together for the best of the community, Father, we thank you that you're here tonight to be with us in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Deanna. Well, I think we're close enough to seven that we can go ahead and start. I'll call the meeting to order and ask you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Shirley, would you take roll call, please?
Mike Pennell, Chad Fuller.
Here.
Larry Lambert.
Here.
Bob Porter.
Here.
Tina Dunn.
Here.
Mary Hammond.
Here.
Looking for approval of our agenda for tonight?
I move that we approve the agenda as printed with the correction made to the spelling of Lindsay Kioski, last name changed from Kudisky to Kioski.
Second.
We have a motion from Bob seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Reading and approval of the minutes of our previous meeting, which was August 17th.
I move that we suspend the rules. We have the reading and approved amendments from August 17, 2023, regular meeting.
Second.
We have a motion from Chad seconded by Larry. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. I'm going to switch the order of our pre-approved reports and ask Bob Ockie if he will step to the podium and give us the Planning Commission annual report.
All right. Well, thank you, Sue.
Thank you, Beth.
The report that you probably have, I am one that does not like to go into a lot of words. So the report was very short and sweet. It covered everything that we did and not the detail that you might, some of you might have wanted. So I'd like to cover a lot of things that we did, and Larry will tell you, correct me if I'm wrong. But in January, we spent a lot of time on Motembo Foods, getting their property up there on Old 78 approved and getting them going. We don't know what happened to that. It just kind of faded away and went away. The property's up for sale up there. They had to get permits from the state. We don't know if they got them or not. Maybe that was what stopped the whole thing. But they were going to come in and do a lot of nice things and open a store and have refrigeration plant on there and process food and so on. We also started in January going into the marijuana. And after we got over the spelling concern for marijuana, we went ahead and talked a lot of that. We had two special meetings on that, trying to get the requirements down for the distance, the spaces, the time, the hour of operations, and where it can be and where it can't be. And used our map up there quite a bit and tried to measure off the computers and so on. We spent a lot of time, probably most of several, well, four meetings anyway, that we did. All of our meetings were long, some of them a lot longer than others. There were a couple that were shorter. We had a special meeting on January 13th to help finalize the marijuana requirements that we had. On the 16th of February, we finalized everything to make it presentable to the council for their approval for the marijuana plan. In March, we made major, minor changes to the requirements that we had in there. April, we had a public hearing to explore the redevelopment-ready communities program, which was put on by the Michigan Economic Development, Economic Development Commission. And Justin Horvath came down and did that. In May, Chuck Donaldson came in and presented some information on that. The biggest thing with that, we've got ticks that we have to meet or items that we have to meet to progress. And one of the things that they're going to do for us is the master plan, which is a requirement that the state has that we have to do, the master plan. And it's also going to help the community once we get it all together. And we tried to do that several years ago, and it was a big fiasco. When you take a bunch of people that don't know what they're doing and try to make something happen that doesn't work. So anyway, they're gonna, we had McKenna is going to come in and help us with that. They come in once a month to make presentation to us. June, City Council gave their approval to engage in the RRC program and pursue RRC communication or certifications on there. Megan has been following up with us and guiding us along in the process that we have to go and make it work. And she's doing a tremendous job, a lot more than I am. September, we had a public hearing to consider rezoning 328 North Main Street from MXD to a two-family residential. And Mary Plommons submitted her resignation that month. October, major discussion, the master plan and costs involved so we could present it to the council. November, we had a public hearing for 221 North Watkins Street from 21 to R1B and approved the costs of RRC. In December, we sent out a RRC requirements needed to be completed, and the RF request for a quote was sent out. It came back. We had four companies that bid on it. And just to give you a little bit of an insight, I personally liked the way that McKenna did it because they came out, took pictures of Perry, and put it into their quote. The rest of them just had generalized pictures in there. So.
Makes a big difference.
Yes, it does. So any questions on the Planning Commission?
Council, do you have any questions or any discussion regarding this report?
You know, I think we've got McKenna coming, as you indicated, Bob. We've got McKenna engaged, and I believe our next meeting, they're going to be back in to give us a progress report. We've had the survey out, and I'd encourage people to go online on the website. And if you haven't done so already, I don't think, Megan, it's too late to input information to that survey. It takes maybe 10 or 15 minutes to go through it, and we'd like just as many people as possible to, within the city and even surrounding community, get, provide input to make the master plan and everything. We hope it can be.
Yep, it should still be open. I can share it on Facebook just to get it at the top of the list again. Great. Anything else, Megan? You want to add to the report?
I'll do it with my other stuff.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
Appreciate it. So next, we are going to have a presentation from our CISA Chair, Tim Delu. And I don't know how many of you have never seen this, but we watched it again last night. And it's probably the third or fourth time I've seen it, and I learned some new stuff.
We're getting pretty good on it, aren't we?
So, yeah. So I hope that you all learn new stuff.
Yeah, we're learning more each time, aren't we?
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
That's good.
Back, right?
Don't worry. The cord tied up. Pretty good?
Yeah, very good. As Sue said, my name is Tim Delu, Chairperson of the CESA Board. CESA Board is the board that operates our fire and EMS coverage for the city as well as surrounding areas. So what we're here to talk about tonight is an assessment increase in order to fund properly the organization. So just a little backstory. CESA was formed back in August of 2004. The CESA Board is consisting of currently 10 members, members of all the organizations that we contract with or are incorporated with. We began EMS operations in January of 2005. We currently cover approximately 200 square miles, which is a large service area for EMS service. So let me just add, tonight's discussion, as I said earlier, we operate both fire and EMS, but tonight's discussion is only about EMS. It's just all the money that we're talking about tonight actually is funding for the EMS part of the organization. That coverage area includes approximately 11 municipalities. We respond to approximately 2,000 EMS runs per year. It's been helpful, pretty steady the last couple of years. We currently staff 16 full-time. When we put this together back in March, we had 18, but we changed it up a little bit. We have 18 full, I'm sorry, 16 full-time International Association firefighter local 653-60 members. And so what that does, it takes that down to eight paramedics and eight EMTs for the Our core commitments, we're very proud of our mission and vision statement. They took a long time. The group committee was formed and put their heads together. I'll read it because of the importance. Perry Air Fire Rescue is committed to providing the highest level of customer service to our community through safe and rapid response to all fire, EMS, and hazardous incidents to save lives, protect property, and preserve the environment. Through that, with that, as our vision, we will uphold this mission by promoting safety and maintaining a well-equipped, highly-trained, motivated team of professional firefighters and EMS personnel while promoting fire prevention, public safety education programs. We will continually strive to meet the changing needs of our community by providing a modern, progressive, and safe department. We will accomplish this by maintaining the highest degree of readiness and focus on the professional development and training of all personnel. And then to support that, we have our core values of courage, respect, dedication, compassion, trust, and integrity. So our services, we are a 24/7/365 ALS/BLS transportation service. We currently staff three ALS licensed ambulances with one backup and two MFR vehicles that's changed. We operate out of four stations. One here in the city, of course, is an ALS ambulance. Station two in the Village of Morris has an MFR vehicle, a medical first responder vehicle. And ALS stands for Advanced Life Support. That was a question that came up last night. I clarified a lot of acronyms here. Station three is our City of Durand ALS ambulance. Station four is Vernon Township, an ALS ambulance. And then we actually have another MFR vehicle in the village, I'm sorry, in Burns Township that run the MFR under our license. We currently service approximately 11,000 units. A unit is actually a residential structure. And then that goes, breaks out further into businesses, businesses of five people would be one, so every five people is another unit. Apartment complexes are each unit is a, each apartment is a unit, so currently about 11,000. We've just added recently to that our resort parks that we have coverage for, those resorts that are open six months out of the year. And so what we're doing now is we're charging that half rate, so $55 in this case, per unit in that, in those resort parks. And that's going to bump that up a little bit from 11,000. A little bit of history on the assessment itself. When we started back in 2004, we basically took over for the PMSA, Perry Morris Shasper Ambulance Service. At that time, they were assessing $45 a household per year, and that's what we started with in 2005 when we started running EMS. We were fortunate enough or unfortunate enough to stay at $45 a household for 15 years. So pretty good for taxpayers to stay at that rate for so long, bad in the sense that we probably didn't keep up with what we should have as far as inflation and things like that. So we did that until 2020. 2020, the assessment increased to $65 a household. And there's a quick breakdown of what that really meant for that increase. Doesn't look like a lot of money. When you look at the chart across the bottom, that shows our expenses versus our revenue. And you can see that our red line, which is the revenue, actually crosses and goes below our expenses. And that happened about late '21, early '22. And that's when we decided that we needed to do something a little different. When your expenses are a little more than your income, you've got to change your ways, Some of the reason for that increase, actually, an assessment increase is necessary to compensate for the burden of rising costs due to post-COVID inflation and the current economy. These are just four categories of stuff that we have dealt with in a pretty serious manner. Wages and benefits, up 8%. We did in 2022, this was when we actually signed a contract with our union. So things of that nature put our budget and wages and retirement benefits, medical benefits, all up 8%. Some of the equipment we purchased, these are just two examples. Power COD is a COD that we use to load people in the back of the ambulance. And in 2017, we bought one at $16,000. 2023 was $22,000, so up 20%. The heart monitor that we use to assess heart issues, 2021, we paid $25,000 for. 2023, we bought one for $30,000, so up again, up 20%, 20%. The apparatus is a huge problem. 2019, we bought a rig for $156,000. 2023, we're out for quote right now, $257,000, up 65%. And a long lead time to get it. And the last one is one that we all experience in our day-to-day stuff. We have it just as well with our fuel, maintenance on the apparatus and equipment that we have to use, the utilities to keep our facilities up and running, all up 15%. Some of the reasons for why we're here today. Projected to 2024, if we stay at $65 a household, the first one is on the income side. This is the breakdown. About 46% of what we have for an income comes from household assessment, which is what we're talking about tonight. The other 54% comes from transports or what we would get paid for actually taking people to an emergency facility. So with that, at $65 a household, we have an estimated $1.6 million. Our expenditures on the other side are all broke down there. As you see, wages is a big part of it. Benefits for those wages, $1.9 million. So you can see those numbers don't, they're not on the right side of each other. So that's why we've got to do something different. So this is our proposal, $110 a household per year. It's an increase of $45 a household over your current $65 a household assessment. And again, there's the breakdown per month, per week, and per day. Again, it doesn't look like a whole lot of money. $110 sounds like a lot, and $45 increase sounds like a lot, but when you really break it down, it really doesn't amount to a lot of money. And then what we did is add this blue line, and that's our new proposed revenue at $110. You can see we get back above our expense line. And again, it's not a big margin between the expenses and the income, but it's enough to keep us above, and we can start to work a little better. Some of the things that we've done to help support that difference in income to expense with, went out for grants, and we were successful this past year, 2022, for a $160,000 grant for some EMS equipment, which we plugged into the ambulances that we currently have, and some training that we've already performed with some of the guys, girls. We entered into some group purchasing programs where we buy multiple things or a lot of the same thing, and so you get a better deal doing that. This year, the used equipment, we did purchase. We opted rather than the $257,000 ambulance, we bought a rig for $75,000. Used, low mileage from an intercity fire department, so very well-kept. And that's currently serviced, running out of station one right now. So huge savings over the $257,000 that we need to spend. We joined the local agencies for cost savings. As you saw, the medical supply stuff all up 20%. We got on board with a Lansing group that does mass purchases, so some of the stuff that we buy from a medical standpoint, medical supplies, we're getting that a discount, saved about 10%. And then this past year, we put out an extended effort of collection. As you can imagine, with 2,000 calls, we've sent out a lot of bills, and not everybody pays. We don't currently balance bill, and what that means is that when we send you a bill for, let's just say for easy numbers, $1,000, and the insurance only pays $500, we don't go back after that $500 because of the, you actually are members of our organization by paying the $110. If you're not members, then we do go to collections with you and try to get our money back. So, but we put an extended effort into that. We've added another last, final ditch effort to try and get some money out of people. And also, we've hired a new agency that tracks a little better some of the insurance companies and secondary insurance coverage, things like that. Trying to limit the amount of money that left right off. And I think that's the last thing. So if there's any questions?
We will entertain questions as we're moving from our agenda into comments from the public. We can turn the lights back on, Kyle. Yes, thank you. Does anyone have questions? You don't have to come up to the front unless you want to, but Tim's here for the purpose of answering questions. Bob Porter also represents the City of Perry on the CISA Board, and he's here. Anyone have any questions at all in regard to the request for a new ambulance assessment?
You might just point out, Tim, that this isn't unique just to the City of Perry?
Yeah, absolutely. Every area around us is in the same boat, right, with personnel and purchasing and things like that. Some of the other areas around us have gone to even a higher value, much higher value, in the $180, $190, $200 range per household. We're fortunate that we think we can get away with the $110, keep it down at a much, a little bit lower increase than what we, you know, these other people have seen, but again, we're going to, we're going to do our best with that increase.
I think we've said this before, but just to make sure everyone has heard it, all of the municipalities that participate with CISA all have to agree to pay the same amount. So if anyone chooses not to, then they either are no longer a member or everybody is in trouble.
Correct. Yeah, that's exactly it. Yeah, it's an all or nothing for the $110. We're pretty confident that we have the majority of the people, entities that serve currently or that we serve are on board. We have a couple that are just holding out for another couple meetings to get this done. Hopefully, we'll see that come through pretty quick and we'll be on the road.
Again, I offer for anyone with questions? No?
There are copies of this presentation, too, if you're interested. There's some right here, and there's some on the back on the chair.
Thank you, Tim.
Thanks, Tim.
Yep.
And in regard to public comment, is anyone here for public comment in regard to any other topic? Then we'll move on to communications when Shirley gets back to her chair.
So I have just the, I'm sorry, the letter that I handed out, the SCP letter that you guys received, and I can just see this now. So I didn't hand this out, but this is an invoice that we received for tornado cleanup from Lower City Electric, and they donated all of their time, all of their materials, $4314, so $4,314 donation.
Wonderful. Can we send them a little thank you now?
Yeah.
Okay. Is that it? Is that all you've got?
That's all I have.
Okay. Now we have department head reports. Megan, would you like to go first?
I have a couple items that are on your agenda and just a few other treasury reports in general for you tonight. Progress update on the Memorial of Devon. The bench has been purchased. It has been delivered. We are waiting the plaque still. The tree has been ordered and paid for. It just needs to be picked up. And then once our world returns back to a little bit of normal, I'll work with DPW about concrete and where it's going to go. I believe the plan is that it'll go on the sidewalk that leads up to the rock surrounded by the flypoles. It'll probably be timed with other concrete work, just like we did the last bunches.
I think Bob's little pink flag is still there.
It is still there.
That is the, yep, absolutely. So that is my update on Devon's memorial. Audit site work happened two days after tornado, so I was slightly nervous that the work would have power, and the auditors who scheduled to be unbuilding that Monday, all worked out. A little bit hectic that week between everything going on, but the field work went great. They were all really happy with how smoothly everything progressed. I have not heard back from them since they've been back in their own offices. I usually expect some follow-up in the couple months following the field work, and so I just, I'm just patiently waiting for that. While they were on site, though, we did talk about the storm, the natural disaster, and what to do with the cost and the expense and the revenue coming in from insurance that's going to offset that. So they did recommend that we create a couple new general ledger numbers. Also, there is a specific general ledger income number that will input any donations and insurance money into. It's, I believe I titled it like "Natural disasters" or something to that extent. And the same thing with expenses. They're all going to funnel through the general fund, capital outlay, salaries, maintenance, just some basic core categories. And then once the audit, once everything's kind of finalized, probably closer to audit time next year, the auditors are going to work with me directly to kind of disseminate those expenses and those funds to the categories they belong, because obviously some of it's going to be water, some of it's going to be sewer, some of it's going to be roads. And they're going to help me with asset management schedules and depreciation. gonna be roads, and they're gonna help me with asset management schedules and depreciation of, obviously, equipment that's going out that we no longer have, and all the new updates coming in. So the auditors were very helpful with trying to plan for what do we do. The other thing I have to point out to you tonight is that I had invested some, I'll call it idle cash, in CDs. Those are the fund balances for our different categories. So about six months ago, it was February of twenty twenty-three, I invested four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars across six funds into CDs that had an interest rate of four point two percent. They were six-month CDs, so in six months, they yielded just shy of ten thousand dollars collectively. I reinvested in the same six-month period CDs. Interest rates have gone up, they're at about four point seven. I'm looking at a plan to kind of stagger when I create CDs. So in another three months, I'll probably open up some more. That way, the cash is always revolving. We're never more than six months away from tied-up cash. And we have plenty of other accessible cash on hand, too. So that was a nice little increase from previous. The final thing I have for you tonight is the master plan that Bob Aki had mentioned. McKenna was on site at summer fun night in August, doing some public input work. So they have two large interactive boards. One of them is Big Ideas, where we want residents and council members and just anybody that's interested to kind of put a post-it note on the board, like what's your big idea for Perry? Maybe it's host an art contest to paint murals on downtown business walls. Like, it doesn't have to be something that the city itself is gonna do, it's just stuff that you wanna see in your community. The other is a SWOT board, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. So you kind of, again, it's interactive, we have post-it notes, we have pens. We would encourage you to put down your ideas on that board as well. I have them here with me tonight in the back of the room. I would encourage anybody to kind of put your ideas on them this evening. We can put them in the lobby at City Hall here as well. They've actually been at the library since summer fun night in August, and I would say there was probably about a dozen post-it notes on each board that I collected this week, transferred them on, sent them on to McKenna so that they can incorporate them into the master plan. There will need to be another public input meeting, open house style sometime this fall. They'll probably plan with the planning commission the next time they meet.
Very good. Good job in the investment of that idle cash. Good job there. Counsel, any questions or comments for Megan?
Thank you.
Kyle, how about if you come up next? Because I know you're needing to do some stuff.
We read minds very well. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
First and foremost, I want to let you know that as of Tuesday afternoon, I worked with ProCom, who handles a lot of radio technology, handles our handhelds and our mobiles, but they also handle the radios that activate our siren. And as of Tuesday afternoon, we have an operational siren. We monkey around with the walkie-talkie that activates it, and I'm not sure what was going on with that replacement antenna. ProCom worked with it for over a week, had it in their possession, had them come out, and we gave notice via social media that we were gonna activate it and do a test, and we were able to get it activated, no problem. So as of right now, we have an operational tornado siren.
Thanks.
So that was good news. I was glad to see that work for everyone. On August twenty-eighth, or twenty-ninth, I'm sorry, the Perry Emergency Response Team met. We were all there, minus one entity. But we had a really good meeting. We did some debrief and some more closure regarding the actual tornado incident. But then we got into future plans and future ideas and what we're looking at doing. And because we're such a broad range of disciplines, we decided that maybe we need to think about some possible training and get everybody on the same playing field as far as communication goes and ideas and how we handle any future emergencies that we might have that need to come together for. So we talked about that. We also talked about some equipment that we might need to acquire. The large lights that we had for all the tree cutting Friday and pretty much Saturday night were pretty important. So we started talking about things like that. Nothing we're gonna move on, but just throwing out some ideas on what we need to consider for the future. And then we started talking about, okay, what do we do as a, as a group? Maybe training-wise, but maybe just to prepare for anything that might happen in the future. So Jeff Weiss, our county emergency manager, and I are going to put together some tabletop exercises for our group to sit down and go over should a train derailment happen, or emergency at the school, or what does that actually look like, if we all come back together and we need each other for different things, different areas. So I'm excited about that. We tabletop a lot in law enforcement. I believe fire, fireside does, too. It's really good to sit down and talk, and you see where other people are coming from, and what is a priority to them, and then you can make sure that it gels with where you're coming from and what you're working with. So that'll be in the future for us as we meet together. And other than that, that's pretty much what I've been focused on lately. Any questions for me?
Anyone have questions, comments, discussion for Kyle?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle.
If you excuse me, I'll turn back to a football here.
All right. Go, Amber. Kevin?
Good evening, all.
Good evening.
I apologize for my absence at our last meeting with my agenda items. I failed to build in successfully in my absence, but I had a family medical issue to deal with, so I'd like to extend my apologies. Life happens, right? So I guess we can do questions and answers, kind of figure out what the council has on their mind in regards to cleanup efforts. I've got a million things going on, and I'm going in a million different directions, and I didn't really have time to prepare anything for tonight. We've worked on the tornado siren, the replacement. The insurance is covering the cost of that. I worked with Kyle and the company to pick out the location and figure out the cost, and we ordered that right away. One other thing that we had started with right away was the garage door at the DPW, the far end of the building. It's not operational, so we're trying to get that working as efficiently as possible. It's gonna need a complete replacement with the opener and everything, so that was ordered straight away. A lot of things, I've just been getting numbers and quotes and cost assessments done, working on cleanup efforts. I've got some agenda items tonight to get the ball rolling. Initially, when we hauled all of the debris to the DPW yard, a cost to get that ground up and removed is gonna be around thirty thousand dollars. And of course, there's no one to cover that except the City of Perry. It's a, it's a big expense. But opening that up for residents and companies and our use of dumping the debris and materials down there has put us forward in the cleanup effort, I believe, and everyone is ecstatic with the progress that we've made so far. Things were moving pretty quickly, pretty fast. We've kind of hit a brick wall now. We're to the point that stuff has to happen that takes time and effort and quotes and approval. And I've been working with the mayor keeping current form on most things that are going on, along with the day-to-day operations. We've started demolition. I'm sure all of you have noticed the pavilion is, is gone now. We had to get that mess cleaned up to make it safe for residents. We'll be starting the DPW soon. The building structure down there and all the debris field in the woods, I don't know if anyone's inquired about that yet, but it is on the list of things that need to be done. We've been working with the insurance company on a non-tornado-related note. They approved our claim for the water treatment plant pipe burst flooding incident. So everything that we submitted for that is gonna be covered. And then we were working with them for the tornado damage claims. They're gonna release our funds soon so we can start scheduling work. I've been kind of holding off. I didn't want to have bills hanging over our head that we weren't gonna cover right away or have a way to cover. So when they release the funds, stuff's gonna start happening pretty quickly. I'm gonna try to get as much done as I can before winter. It's just, it's a long process. So if any of you have any questions for me, I will happily do my best to.
Did you say the insurance company is covering a cost for a new, of a new siren?
Yes.
Okay. Now, I gotta say, you, I think you guys did a awesome job.
Thank you.
All of you, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, could have done it better, so we appreciate that.
Other than the stumps and the raised sidewalk, I took a walk through town, you know, two weeks after the event, and, you know, there's still some things to be done, but compared to the day after, it's miraculous how well it's been picked up, not only by DPW, but all the residents of the city pitching in, and folks outside the city pitching in.
In regards to the sidewalks, we had C2AE come in and do a sidewalk assessment of the damages, and got us a number that we submitted with the emergency relief funding. So I don't remember the total of the amount that's going for that application. Two hundred and six thousand dollars, that's out-of-pocket expense that's not covered by anyone but the City of Perry. And some of that has to do with underinsured DPW buildings. Didn't have replacement cost on all of them. Two of the buildings were cash value, which was set years ago, and it was undervalued, and it's a little disheartening, but it is what it is, and we'll do what we can with what we have. And just, you know, move forward, rebuild, and keep going, and get through all this mess, and continue on with our day-to-day. And then...
Did you want the total on the sidewalks?
Sure.
Twenty thousand, nine twenty?
Those are newer numbers. The C2AE had recently done a project with another community, and that was the rates that they had figured, which I figured it to be a lot more than that, but they, they know people in the industry, and if we wanted to contract that or move forward with that type of project, we'd probably wait till spring. For now, once we get the stumps removed, we're gonna collect all the concrete chunks and haul them out, and then we're gonna backfill with probably topsoil and then gravel on top so that they're passable. Beyond that, I don't see us pouring any new concrete yet this fall. If things go really well, we might get there. But, you know, it'll be up to us as a group to figure out how to go forward with that.
Their evaluation of the sidewalks also included the area underneath the sidewalks for any, do you want to speak to that?
They, they just kind of double-checked to make sure we weren't gonna have any sewer issues based on, or water issues based on the damages done by the uprooted trees. And we haven't had any complaints or sewer backups, or, you know, low water pressures or anything like that, so. But that's, that's kind of what they, they do, is, is an overall review. And they did that at cost for us, as our engineer of record. So it was nice that they were able to get on it, and I was able to get figures so quickly so that we could submit our numbers and include that in, in the cost of the recovery effort. I tried to lean on people where I could. A lot of this stuff just has to be done, just grinded and out. So there'll definitely be more to come, for sure. But, you know, getting the community walkable, passable again is, that's the biggest black eye right now that people see when you drive through or walk through, and getting that mess cleaned up is gonna be a step in the right direction, along with the DPW mess. Just so we don't have to look at it anymore, it's kind of a sore spot for me.
Does anybody else, counsel, have any other questions, comments?
When they looked, when they assessed underneath, they didn't use GPR grown penetration radar or anything like that, right?
No.
They just looked at what they see at the surface?
Right. And then, like I said, we haven't had any other complaints or issues along those lines, so. Things might get a little hairy with the removal of some of that stuff. We did mistick everything. Everything's ready to go pending approval of the agenda item tonight. We didn't get the grinding on the agenda for tonight because I've only got the one quote, and I want a second to verify that we're gonna fall for it. Initial assessments of it, when I talked to another company, said it was gonna be thirty to forty thousand, and this company committed at probably twenty-eight thousand. But Michigan Recycling, they want the material. They want to haul it out here. They want to burn it for fuel for the power plant. So I don't know that we're gonna do better on cost than that, but I'll dig into that later, you know. I think that's pretty much all I have for you on the cleanup effort. We did have an open RFP for engineer work that deadline last Friday. The mayor graciously gave us some early leave time for the holiday, and I didn't feel right just closing out the RFP with us closing early. So we extended it to this Friday. We have two submittals so far, and we'll open them tomorrow at three o'clock. And I was hoping to bring that to council tonight, too, but we extended it, so there's no need to do that. I'm pleased that we got two. That was a budgeted item that we've been working on for a while. So that'll come probably at the next meeting, and hopefully with the brush grinding or debris removal, however you want to word it. But I'm kind of jumping around, but just things are happening, you know, occurring, so I just wanted you all to have as much information as you can. Is there, is there anything else at this time?
I think we're all set. Kevin, thank you. You're doing a great job.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Shirley, did you have anything additional?
I was already excited about the donation matters.
Yeah, I thought maybe, okay. Then let me just speak to these papers that I just passed out for council. We have been pursuing, applying for financial assistance, emergency financial assistance from the state of Michigan. And it has been a process, quite a learning process. And, but we've had a lot of help from Jeff Weiss with Shawassee County Emergency Management. Also, just Kevin and Kyle and Shirley and Megan and everybody getting the information together. And so a lot of that information is what I have handed out to you. This morning, I got a call from Kevin, whatever his name is. Sweeney. Kevin Sweeney, thank you. He's with Michigan State Police, and he's the one who looks over our paperwork that we've submitted through Jeff, and then sends it on to the governor's office. And he said, "You did everything right." That just made me cry, because you just don't know, you know, if we are. So I was glad to hear that. So Megan, Shirley, counsel, Kevin, everybody, we did everything right. So I don't know if we're gonna get any money, but he had a much more positive attitude toward that than every other person that I've talked to up to this point. I won't mention names, but very negative reactions, "No, you're not gonna get any money. Oh, yeah, go ahead and apply, but you won't get any money," over and over and over again. He said, "This will go to the governor's office. This will be evaluated. I wish I had two hundred thousand dollars to send you right now, but in seven to ten days, I'll be in touch." Congresswoman Alyssa Slotkin, for those that don't know this, she came out with a couple of her aides, a couple weeks ago now, I guess it's been, and she did meet with several of the councilmen and our And she did meet with several of the councilmen and our staff. And, um, she was very complimentary on how much cleanup had been accomplished compared with pictures and what she had been told. We did give her the tornado tour. Her most exciting moment was when she saw the Humvee over here parked on the side. She's just, "Oh, wow, Perry's got a Humvee. That's so cool." But, but she has been included in all the emails with information that's been submitted, applications that have been submitted. And she said she will have her staff following this along every step of the way. And they respond. Every time I've sent something out, they say, "Got it, we're watching it." So we're getting some help, I think. So we'll just keep hoping for at least some help. Because as Kevin alluded, we have two hundred and six thousand dollars in expenses that are not covered by insurance. Most of that is going to have to come out of the general fund. The cleanup expenses, of course, will have to be paid right up front. Other things, rebuilding, we can kind of move money around a little bit from insurance and use it to pay some of the cleanup. But eventually, it's all got to come out in the wash. So hopefully, we'll get some help with that. We may just have to delay for who knows how long, um, getting the restorations completed. But we will do our best with what we have. Megan and I did put together this note that's dated September 5th. Up in the corner has the City of Perry letterhead. And I'd, I'd like to get your feedback as to whether this is something you're comfortable with putting out in our typically public posted places, the website, Facebook, Carol's Board, and so on. Just letting people know about the expenses that are exceeding our insurance. We have had businesses and individuals who have inquired along the way as to how donations could be made. And so I think we can use this letter to be in touch with them. As Shirley mentioned, we've had some businesses, um, who have donated labor, who've donated equipment, who've donated so much. But, um, we need more. So the letter is just alluding to that. And, um, if you could send me any feedback that you would need to see changed in this before it could be processed, if you could do that in the next couple of days, then Megan can get this information out to people. Any questions about all that stuff? Any questions from the public? I'm happy to try to answer them. Carter, did you have a question? Okay, then we will move on to committee reports. And we're looking for Personnel Committee to do a report.
All right. Well, Personnel Committee, I think we met, was it Tuesday of last? Was it Tuesday of last week?
Yeah.
Yes. Um, it was for, we had eleven, eleven interviews that day. We were, it was a busy day. Um, we also had, Shirley was involved in it, and then Megan was involved in it. And we narrowed it down to, for the office assistant, for the part-time office assistants upstairs. And I would like to introduce to the council Lindsey Kowalski?
Kiyoski.
Kiyoski, sorry.
No, you're fine.
Um, she is, I think she's been here.
Uh, just a week.
Just a week?
Yeah, she started on Tuesday.
And what I, what I've heard, she's been here for a week. Everything's been going really well, so. Um, I would like, like I said, I would just like to introduce her to the part-time position of the office assistant.
Lindsey, could you just stand up so everybody knows for sure that's you? And Carter, Carter is her sidekick. Carter, thank you for coming with mom tonight. We appreciate that. So when you come into City Hall to the front desk, Lindsey, if, if she's here at that time, because she is part-time, but she may be the one greeting you there. Any other comments, Shirley, about that?
She comes in at nine right now and leaves at about two-thirty. Yeah, that's good.
Moving on then to presentation and approval of the bills.
Okay, one more thing.
Okay, sorry. Backing up again for some of today.
The Parks Committee, we are meeting this month on the nineteenth. That's Tuesday at six-thirty here in council chambers. That's all I got, sorry.
Okay, Parks Committee meeting, okay, very good.
I'll just let everybody know that the last meeting I reported, that we had put the animal ordinance task force together. That has happened. We have held our first meeting, and the things are moving, moving forward. So more work to be done, but work in progress.
Good, thank you, Larry. Anyone else, committee reports? Now we'll move to presentation, approval of the bills.
I move that we approve the bills as presented, and that the payment be authorized.
Second.
We have a motion from Chad, seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Looking at our next agenda item, under old business, we continue to carry these forward. Discuss emergency services, discuss building the general fund. I'd like to suggest, certainly up to council, your decision, I'd like to suggest that we table these. And then that takes them off our agenda. We can then bring them back when the time is more appropriate. We're just so busy with everything related to tornado and so on. So that's my thought, looking for your thoughts as well.
I absolutely agree. I mean, I, we started discussions way pre-tornado.
Do we need a motion to table it?
I think we do, but I think you can table them both in the same motion.
I move that we table the discussion emergency services and building the general fund at this time.
Second. We have a motion from Bob, seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Moving into new business then, we are. You know what? I'd really like to jump to, to the appointment to City Council first. I should have recognized this when we were looking at the agenda, but I didn't. So let's do the mayor's appointment to City Council. And that is for an appointment of Jacob Puffer. Jacob, would you just stand up so everybody can see who you are? I've talked to Jacob a couple of times. He's very interested in stepping out and serving council. And we're very excited, I am very excited to have him do that. So I appoint Jacob Puffer to the City Council, replacing Steve Wallace for the term expiring in 2024, looking for council approval.
I move that we approve the mayor's appointment of Jacob Puffer, City Council replacing Steve Wallace for the term expiring 2024.
What month of 2024?
It would be the election, November.
I thought we had these, I seconded, I just wanted to make sure we were.
We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Bob, clarifying that that is expiring November 2024. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Looking then for Shirley to swear in Jacob Puffer. Did I get y'all out of order? Now you don't know where you're at.
I'm good. You're good.
So Jacob, if you would come up, and Shirley will swear you in. Megan is going to take your picture too, so.
Okay. I might take my jacket off.
Okay. Where's your hand, face Megan? Oh, like kind of face.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will.
Support.
Support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the state of Michigan.
The Constitution of the state of Michigan.
The charter and ordinances.
The charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Perry.
Of the city of Perry.
And I will faithfully perform the duties.
And I will faithfully perform the duties.
As elected council member.
As elected council member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Good deal.
Thank you. Now you can have a seat right here next to Larry. And that packet is for you.
Welcome. Thank you.
Okay, jumping back to the beginning then of new business for possible approval of ambulance assessments.
I move that we approve the following resolution. Whereas the city is, excuse me, for the pity, uh, pity. That is gracious. Whereas Perry City Council has held a public hearing and made a determination to create a special assessment district consisting of the entire city of Perry to be known as the Ambulance Service Special Assessment District of 2023. And whereas the Perry City Council has held a second public hearing to clear objections to the distribution of the special assessment levy. Therefore, the city of Perry does hereby confirm the special assessment district as fore-said and does hereby direct the assessor to spread the special assessment levy as itemized below on the parcels of real property subject to said levy on the July 1st subsequent city tax billings. The city of Perry does further resolve to make the redetermination of costs to the city of ambulance service for each of the following ten years to be held on the first City Council meeting in May at the Perry City Hall. And the city reserves the right to increase the assessment at such time in amount not to exceed ten percent of the costs established for the prior years. The assessor is directed to spread the subsequent assessment as follows. Each parcel of property with the district having at least one unit as defined below shall be assessed at the rate not to exceed one hundred and ten dollars per unit starting with July, I'm sorry, starting with 2023 tax year. The winter tax roll shall reflect the additional tax amount approved for the 2023 tax year, and all the subsequent tax years shall be assessed the full amount on the summer tax assessment starting in 2024. A unit is defined as the following. A, a single-family resident. B, a mobile home being used as a dwelling. C, a residential apartment and multiple-family structure or multiple-youth structure, a commercial or business property with zero to five employees. An additional assessment shall be placed upon any such parcel for each multiple of five full-time employees or part-time thereof. For purpose of computing, computing the assessment under the definition, a full-time employee shall be counted for each forty hours of wages paid by the employer in a week preceding this hearing. Second.
The motion from Bob Porter, seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, as Rod, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. We will so instruct the assessor to do her duty there. Thank you all for that, and Tim, and Bob, and Sisa, and everybody. Thank you for all you do. Do you want us to send you a letter?
Please.
Okay. I have to write that down. Send the letter. Know that. Okay. Moving on then in our agenda two, the possible approval of new banners. Do you want to talk about that?
I had one question. I know I saw on the budget, because I remember it.
Yes.
Is that, was that the amount? I couldn't.
I think the amount was sixty-five hundred, right? So it was a little more than the sixty-five hundred. But, um, three of our banners were destroyed in the tornado. So three of our banners are going to be covered by.
Some insurance.
Some insurance money. Um, actually, I'm sorry, two banners, and we're going to get two sets of brackets. So, um, whatever that is, what, a hundred and ninety-eight dollars is going, is off the bill. The new price is sixty-five eighty-six, so about eighty-six dollars over.
Oh, we're getting eighty-six dollars.
And, um, so we will be, we have already submitted three hundred and seventy-eight dollars to insurance for that. So, um, we've got all the banners picked out, and we're just, you guys approve it, and we're going to order them.
I move that we approve the purchase of banners for Main Street and City Hall poles for broader commercial display in the amount of six thousand five hundred eighty-six dollars.
Looking for a second, Bob?
Second.
We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And we have a insufficient funds policy that we need to review. Megan, do you want to tell us about that?
This is a policy that's been in existence. I don't know how to base the top, memorize, but it was previously known as a bad check policy. In today's world, it's no longer just a check that might be bad. It could be, um, a credit card. It could be an ACH payment. It could be an e-check. It can be anything. So it's just kind of cleaning up the verbiage in the policy. The reason I think this policy comes in front of you is because it does have a fee associated with it that goes on the fee schedule. Otherwise, I think typically policies are internal for us. But because this one has a fee associated with it, it's in front of you tonight. I'm kind of thinking about it too. If we want to change it to say like a return payment policy, because really it can, it might not even be insufficient funds. It could be, um, someone has a closed bank account. It could be a frozen bank account. So it might not be, insufficient funds was probably the wrong word for me to put in the top of that policy. So if you want to, um, if you're okay with the rest of it, but you want to approve it with like a return payment policy name, that's just something I thought about, as Shirley and I were putting it on the agenda actually, or the minutes, when we were looking through the minutes. But maybe that word isn't quite the right word either. But it's, it's more than just checks.
Do we need to make that decision tonight? Can we approve the policy and the fee? And then if you want to do some housekeeping by changing the title?
The fee doesn't change. The fee is not changing. The fee stays the same. So if you just want to approve the policy as written, but with the new title of, um, return payment, I, I think that's okay too. Or I can just break it in, whichever.
What would you like?
Um, I think it's easiest if we just call it a return payment policy and approve the rest as written.
New member of our council who's an accountant, do you agree with that?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. So looking for a motion with the new title.
I move that we approve the revisions to the insufficient return payment policy, previously called bad check policy, last amended on January 21st, 2016. Changing the wording from a check or a check written to a return payment issued to the city. The NSF fee remains the same.
We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you, Megan.
Thank you. And then just a little side note, in the future, there's probably going to be other policies that says I have time and I look through them when I think outdated verbiage that all.
Very good.
It'll be here.
Very good.
Thank you.
We appreciate that. Now we can look at these things that Kevin's going to come back up and explain to us about the possible approval of stump removal after tornado and tree removal and so forth and so on.
So initially during the storm cleanup efforts, um, we, we had a company called Midwest Tree Service that, that had the clamshell bucket on their truck. They were doing the majority of the bulk cleanup for us. I had initially, in the early days of the cleanup effort, had asked them if they could do the stump removal for us as well. And then a week after we had that discussion, another tornado goes through south of us and. and they vacated and I can't get them back to do any work. So in an effort to move forward with our cleanup, I contacted a contractor that we've used in the past to do some of this work. They're available. They usually give us a good rate to do this stuff. And we submitted this in the emergency relief fund effort. But essentially, we're going to be on a hook for the start of it. So he agreed that it would take probably 10 to 12 hours at a rate of $600 an hour. That's for equipment and trucking to get those stumps hauled down to the DPW yard. The company that's going to do the brush grinding and cleanup down there, they have a large splitter. They can split them apart and they get all the dirt and stuff out of the bottom part of them as they split them. And then it gets added to the rest of the debris and then ground up into chips and haul the way. So getting them down to the DPW yard is the expense there. And doing the math, I've come up with a figure of $7,500. It shouldn't take more than that. Some of the stumps are big and bulky and are going to require a big truck. The one at the end of, by Washington Street on Second Street is rather large. So just looking for council to approve this so we can move forward with that.
Council, do you have any questions for Kevin about the cordier excavating bill?
Did he say what he was going to load them on? Because I know he may have mentioned here of, if he needs a lowboy.
Yeah, he's going to do a smaller truck and trailer or I think they have like a 10-year dump, eight-year dump, something along those lines, whatever they use normally. He would do most of that. The only thing he needed a lowboy for was for the big one at the end.
The real, but if you can't get it up high enough in the other truck.
Right. Says six feet tall. A lot of those, I live off Washington. A lot of them are a lot bigger than six feet. Is he going to be able to cut that down or we have to contract someone else? I'm hoping that he'll be able to remove with the power equipment the excess. And to get under the wires and stuff. If we have to look at other options, if he's not able to do it, then we might have to have it, somebody come in and cut it up and then lay it down to get it loaded. I don't anticipate that. I think that just knocking the roots off, they're usually pretty brittle. They should come right off or who cut it, dig the dirt out and cut it off.
That was from the stump, the root ball.
Yeah.
I was confused, like if it was the trunk or the root ball. So with that script, he should be able to scratch that out.
Right. That was our thought as well.
Is there any major concern, Kevin? As we disrupt that, and we talked earlier, the fact that we didn't knock on wood, sustain any underground damage. We start yanking those stumps out. Is there any pre-work that needs to be done to try to help mitigate any chances of creating a problem?
We mis-digged all of the site locations in anticipation of Midwest doing the work weeks ago. So they are mis-marked. And if there's any utilities in there, we may have to bring our vector down and back out around them and identify where that is and make sure that it's free and clear to lift and pull out of there. We don't want to cause any secondary issues in our cleanup effort for sure. I know that the one out here at City Hall up front here, that one had a fiber cable on it. You could see it. It was exposed the day after the storm. I walked over and looked at it and it was hung up in the roots. So we're going to have to do some work on that one. We are prepared to do whatever we got to do to get it moving forward. So yes, we're, we'll use extreme caution and public safety is one of my main concerns.
Other questions, comments, discussion?
I move that we approve cordier excavator and remove the tree stumps upgraded by the tornado in amount not to exceed $7,500. We authorize Kevin Tyler, DPW superintendent, to schedule the cleanup.
Second.
Motion from Larry, seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And now the other bid.
So we have a lot of standing trees that are damaged and unsafe. They're rotten around the base, they're halfway up. They're leaning over homes. Again, I was going to have Midwest Tree come in with their crane and cut these out of the way and haul them down to our debris piles. I can't get them back through the work, so I had to call in somebody that we've used in the past, Dunsmore Tree Service. We contracted with them last year for brush pickup. I'm sure you all are aware. I came in at the tail end of that, but it was due to understaffing and strain on the department that they had contracted those services out for the summer. So I asked them to come write me up a quote to have all of those partial or damaged trees removed. And he came with a quote of $5,000. So I do believe it is a public safety issue. I don't, we've had some wins after the event that could have potentially caused more damage and we kind of dodged some bullets. So getting these trees down, making it safe for those residents living underneath them and people, passersby, I think is in the city's best interest. Because they are, every tree that I had listed was in the right of way. Those same trees that have been standing for a long, long time. They were due to have some work done to them. The majority of them that came down. So mother nature kind of took care of that part of it for us. But now we have the residual that we need to address and make safe, so.
If approved, Kevin, is there workload such that they could act on it fairly quickly?
Yes.
Kevin, I'm just wondering about this total. To me like the first page.
There was a secondary quote that I had in the draw-up for that, the tree at the McQueen House that was addressed at the meeting where we were talking about the animals.
Is that the second page?
The second page is that quote.
Oh, I see.
So I was just going to approve that and have that work done because I've had a couple of quotes that are similar in price and that's under my budget amount.
Okay.
What we're focused on here is the cleanup effort.
Okay, so we're just really looking at the first page?
Yes, please. Sorry, that was a miscommunication between me and Shirley. That was my fault.
Don't just hold that hand.
I move that we approve Dunsmore Tree Service to remove the tree's stumps and clean up near the following addresses. 228 Second Street, 320 East Second Street, 403 East Second Street, 422 East Second Street, and 338 Green Street in the amount of $5,000. We authorize Kevin Tabersky and DPW superintendent to schedule the cleanup, so.
We have a motion from Chad, seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work. Do we have any other business that may come before council at this time? Anyone would like to make public comment at this time? I hear the baby in the back. That's a nice, nice sound. Can the baby come every, every night? Council, any discussion or observations? Any items you'd like to see placed on the next agenda? Shirley's got Perry's Pride Awards and so who's?
I don't know. So we were going to move August awards to September. And Kina, we were going to ask if you would do that. I can only know how that works. And then we're going to move September's awards to October 5th, which will be Mike and, oh, and October's award to October 19th. So two in October. And then Chad, that will be you with the second meeting in October, okay?
Okay, now, we did do some moving around of our council members on our standing committees. And Jake, I didn't talk to you about this, but assuming this is all right. I would like you to serve on the Parks Committee and on the Personnel Committee. Parks meets every month. Chad is the chair. Personnel only meets when there's a need. And I think we're all set for a while, I hope. So that may not meet again for a while. Kina is going to be serving on the Ordinance Committee and the Technology Committee. You are on the Parks Committee, Bob, and on Sisa. And that counts, even though it's not a standing committee because it's so, such a time.
Thank you, that takes time.
Yes, it sure does. Chad is Personnel Committee and Parks. Mike is going to move to Ordinance Committee and off of Parks. And he's on Personnel also. So I think that gets us back to full standing committee postings. Anything else that needs to be discussed or put on for the next agenda?
I'd like to have, based on your feedback you get relative to your letter, I'd like to suggest we have some discussion about, at the next meeting possibly, about how we make donations for our efforts more visible in some fashion, whether that's some sort of posting that says, here's what we have managed to earn from donations. Because I think $205,000 is a big hit to the city's already struggling budget, if you will.
So give some thought to how we can make that more visible.
Visible, you know, beyond just, you know, if you'd like to donate, we, I would say put a campaign out for it or sell pies or anything, but try to make people aware that the city's facing a bit of an economic challenge that we certainly had to plan for.
Good idea. We'll talk about that next time. Be thinking. Anything else? Here we are then at 8:17. Adjourned.